You're Shauna. Shauna, you good?
Hey, it's now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this special meeting the German Township Trustees to order. Can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you have the roll call, Mr. Eastman?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross?
Mr. Stub?
Here.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
All are present. Yes, this is a special meeting of the German Township Trustees, the purpose of which is to hold a public hearing to review and discuss zoning case ZC twenty-four dash oh one, an amendment to the German Township zoning resolution, adding regulations for small-scale solar facilities.
I'd like to introduce the motion to open the public hearing to your case CC dash two-four dash oh one, text changes to the current German Township zoning resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is open.
I just want to make a quick mention. The German Township Rural Zoning Commission spent several months to put these regulations together. I'm going to thank them for their efforts. So could we have the staff report?
The text changes to the German Township zoning regulations involve additions to section twenty-four oh one D, section thirty-eight oh one L, section thirty-eight oh one M, change to thirty-eight oh one M from thirty-eight oh one L, section thirty-eight oh three C, and section thirty-eight oh four M. All the changes deal with small-scale solar facility regulations in accordance with Ohio Revised Code five-one-nine dot two-one-three, Township's Small Wind Farm zoning regulation. The German Township Rural Zoning Commission approved the changes at a required public hearing held on four-eleven twenty-twenty-four. Montgomery County Planning Commission reviewed the changes and recommended approval of the changes on March fourteenth twenty-twenty-four. All legal advertising requirements have been met. Notice that this meeting appeared in the German Town Press on April twenty-fifth twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, I know this is going to take a little bit, but I'd like to have Shauna read changes in section twenty, section thirty.
Just read?
Just read.
Okay.
Just the changes, just read.
So this is Article twenty-four, section twenty-four oh one, the small solar facility defined as a solar energy system and associated facilities with a single interconnection to the electrical grid and designated for or capable of operating at an aggregate capacity of less than fifty megawatts shall be permitted use only in the I-two general industrial district. Any such solar energy installation shall meet the specific requirements for accessory structures in the general industrial district, as well as the following requirements for small solar facility. One, application process. A small solar facility to be located in the general industrial district is subject to and shall comply with the application process and requirements provided under the zoning resolution. Two, coverage. A small solar facility shall be included as part of any lot tract ground coverage calculation applicable to the general industrial district and shall not exceed in the aggregate fifty percent of the total area of the lot or tract. The removal of prime agricultural soil shall be limited to two acres in total for the purpose of installing any building, components, or facility not intended for any agricultural purpose. In addition, no ground-mounted solar energy system shall disturb more than four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet of hydrosoil. Hydrosoil in Montgomery County can be viewed at the National Resources Conservation Services NRCS website, www.usda.gov. Three, location. Any small solar facility other than an integrated or rooftop solar energy system, except components located entirely underground, shall be located entirely in the rear yard. No small solar facility shall be located on the front facade of any structure or any facade facing a public right-of-way. No small solar facility shall be located in front of a principal building or structure. In the case of corner lots, no small solar facility shall be located between a principal building or structure and a public right-of-way. Height. The maximum height of any integrated or rooftop solar energy system shall not exceed the maximum height applicable to principal structures located in the general industrial district. An integrated or rooftop solar energy system mounted on a roof shall not vertically exceed the highest point to the roof of which it is attached. The maximum height of any ground-mounted solar energy system at any point shall not exceed twelve feet. Five, buffers and setbacks. Where a small solar facility is located on property adjacent to or in close proximity to a property zone for residential use, as determined by the zoning inspector, no part of the small solar facility other than components located entirely underground shall be located within a hundred and fifty feet of an existing residential dwelling. No small solar facility other than components located entirely underground shall be located within a hundred and fifty feet of another property line. No small solar facility other than components located entirely underground shall be located within a hundred and fifty feet of a public right-of-way or shared-use drive. Any small solar facility must comply with the setback requirements applicable to the zoning district where located. Six, visual buffer. A small solar facility shall have a visual buffer of natural vegetation, plantings, and/or fencing that does, and all of the following, enhances the view from any existing residential dwelling and from any public right-of-way, is in harmony with the existing vegetation and view shed in the area, and provides a reasonable visual screening to minimize view of and noise from the small solar facilities to adjacent lots and from any public right-of-way. Ground-mounted solar energy systems located on corner lots shall comply with the applicable requirements, including but not limited to those for yards offering and screening, or lots in the general industrial district. All visual buffers shall meet specified height and setback requirements at the time of installation and be maintained over the life of the facility. Seven, fencing. Any fencing and/or screening installed in connection with the small solar facility shall be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding properties and uses. Fencing shall be maintained in good repair and in an aesthetic manner at all times. If fencing includes barbed wire to meet NEC requirements for high-voltage installations, a visual buffer of natural vegetation and planting equal to the height of the fencing at a minimum must be maintained. No fencing shall be greater than eighteen height. Number eight, road use maintenance agreement. The property owner shall provide for the adequate maintenance and protection of township, county, and state-maintained, protected, or managed infrastructure, including but not limited to roadways, right-of-ways, and easements to be used in connection with the small solar facility, as detailed further in a road use and maintenance agreement or a rule of with the township. Any damaged public roads, culverts, and bridges shall be repaired promptly to their previous or better condition by the property owner or their designee under the guidance of the appropriate regulatory authority. Number nine, maintenance. Small solar facilities must be maintained in good working order at all times. The owner of the property and owner of the small solar facilities shall, within thirty days of permanently ceasing operation of a small solar facility, provide written notice of abandonment to the zoning inspector. An unused small solar facility may stand no longer than three months following abandonment. All costs associated with the dismantling or demolition of the small solar facility and associated equipment shall be borne by the property owner. A small solar facility is considered abandoned when it ceases transmission of electricity for thirty consecutive days. Removal includes removal of all apparatuses, supports, and/or other hardware associated with the existing small solar facility, and in the case of ground-mounted solar energy systems installed, returning the property to a graded, seated, and/or landscaped state similar to its condition prior to construction slash installation. Ten, decommissioning plan. Any small solar facility shall submit a decommissioning plan, which shall be prepared by a professional engineer registered with the State Board of Registration for Professional Engineers and Surveyors. Board of Zoning Appeals may reject the engineer chosen by the applicant and require the applicant to choose another qualified engineer. Plans shall contain the following: a list of all parties responsible for decommissioning, a schedule of decommissioning activities not to extend beyond twelve months from the date the utility ceases operation, an estimate of the full cost of decommissioning the facility, including the proper disposal of all facility components and restoration of the land on which the facility is located to its preconstruction date, and a recalculation of decommissioning costs every five years from the date of the original decommissioning plan or from the date of the latest updated decommissioning calculation by a professional engineer as detailed above. Number eleven, performance bond. Prior to beginning construction, the applicant shall post a performance bond to ensure that funds are available for the decommissioning of the facility. Performance bond shall be equal to the estimated of the cost of decommissioning included in the decommissioning plan and shall be held in escrow in a financial institution until the Board of Zoning Appeals has determined that the facility has been decommissioned according to the requirements of the decommissioning plan. Twelve, drainage. A survey shall be required by the German Township Board of Zoning Appeals as part of the approval process to ensure that no facility will be constructed that changes the flow of current streams or channels or the functioning of drainage systems, which may negatively impact the upstream or downstream property. Thirteen, safety services. The property owner shall provide sufficient evidence that the property can be adequately served by the appropriate safety services. For example, a letter from the township fire marshal verifying that emergency response personnel and vehicles can safely reach and service the property, including the area where the small solar facility is located. Lighting. Any lighting for a small solar facility shall meet any lighting restrictions applicable to the general industrial district. In addition, all lighting in, of, and associated with the small solar facility must narrowly focus light inward toward the solar equipment, be downlit and shielded, and result in a maximum horizontal luminance level not to exceed one-foot candle. Small solar facilities shall be placed or arranged in a manner so as not to reflect unreasonable glare onto adjacent buildings, properties, or roadways. Fifteen, noise. Any small solar facility shall comply with the noise resolution and all applicable noise restrictions set forth within the township, including but not limited to the general industrial district. Sixteen, advertising. Small solar facilities and the property where located shall not be used for the display of advertising, for the purpose of this section, reasonable and customary identification, name, insignia, logo, and/or similar of the manufacturer or operator of the system that is incorporated into or manufactured on the equipment itself shall not be considered advertising. Seventeen, building permits. All small solar facilities and parcels thereof shall obtain all applicable required building permits from the state of Ohio and Montgomery County or other local building jurisdiction. Eighteen, other restrictions. A small solar facility shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations. In addition, it shall be a violation of these zoning ordinances for a small solar facility or the energy derived from such a facility to be aggregated, consolidated, or linked in any form with any other facility when it may result exceed the fifty-megawatt maximum limit of a small solar facility. Nineteen, certificate of zoning compliance. A certificate of zoning compliance shall be required before any construction is commenced on a small solar facility. Applicant shall provide the township zoning inspector with the following items and/or information when applying for a certificate of zoning compliance: an engineering report that shows the total size and height of the proposed small solar facility; data specifying the megawatt size and the generating capacity in megawatts of the particular small solar facility; hazardous materials, for example batteries or transformers; containment and disposal plan; a site drawing showing the location of the small solar facility, including all equipment and components thereof in relation to, and measurements of distances from all existing structures on the property, roads, and other public rights-of-way, and neighboring property lines; evidence of compliance with applicable setback and all other applicable zoning restrictions; a maintenance schedule as well as a dismantling plan that outlines how the small solar facility, including all equipment and components, therefore, will be dismantled at the end of their use and/or upon abandonment, approved by the township fire marshal as detailed above under safety services, and any other information or materials reasonably requested by the zoning inspector.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the only part? No, that was the big one, wasn't it, twenty-four? Okay. All right. Article thirty-eight, accessory uses, section L. All right, section L. Small solar energy systems, where energy is both produced and used on-site, including ground-mounted solar energy systems, integrated solar energy systems, and rooftop solar energy systems, shall comply with the following requirement. One, with the exception of residential rooftop solar energy systems, zoning permits must be obtained for all solar installations. Two, all such systems must be owned, not leased, by the landowner where the system will reside, with the power to be produced and used on-site. Three, the total surface area or footprint of a ground-mounted solar energy system shall not exceed twenty-five-hundred square feet, and the maximum height shall not exceed twelve feet. Four, no ground-mounted solar energy system shall be located within thirty-five feet of another property line or within thirty-five feet of a public right-of-way or shared-use drive pipe. And five, no ground-mounted solar energy system shall be located in front of a principal building or structure. It shall be located entirely in the rear yard and shall not occupy more than thirty-five percent of the area of the required rear yard. In the case of corner lots, no ground-mounted solar energy system shall be located between a principal building or structure and a public right-of-way. And then, under thirty-eight oh three, section C, any small solar facility defined as a solar energy system and associated facilities with a single interconnection to the electrical grid and designed for or capable of operation at an aggregate capacity of less than fifty megawatts shall not be permitted in residential agricultural business and office districts. See Article twenty-four for general industrial district permitted use. And then, section thirty-eight oh four, standards, we have M, which is now the removal of prime agricultural soil shall be limited to two acres in total for the purpose of installing any building, component, or facility not intended for any agricultural purpose.
Okay, thank you. So it was brought to my attention that there were several typos and punctuation errors in Article twenty-four and Article thirty-eight that needed to be corrected. Since we're talking about those two articles, I think you go ahead. Let's read these. You don't really have to follow them. Let's read them. Page five, number eleven, estimate, not estimated. Page eight changed to F, period, not F. Page nine, number four, changed to is, not are. Page nine, number five, remove effective six fourteen twelve and change marshal to marshal with one L. Page nine, number five, add after liquids at quotation marks, after liquids. Page ten, section two-four oh five, changed the addition to in addition. Recommended text corrections to Article thirty-eight, page three, page two, one thousand with a comma, not one point zero zero zero. Changed the period to comma. Page six, three-eight oh four A, delete the semicolon. So.
I apologize for those errors. I could not find a Word file, so I had to retype entire articles.
So is there any discussion on any of those changes?
No, they're just simple.
There are.
I had one question, too, on Article twenty-four, it's page five, number thirteen, Township Fire Marshal, should he just be Township Fire Chief?
Wow.
Because we don't really have a fire marshal. I mean, I don't think about it. I just, okay. And then that's all. That's the only thing I noticed, so.
Okay, can I, I'll make a motion to include the corrections for Article twenty-four and thirty-eight at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
And my copy. Have any requests?
All. Let's change. So do the trustees, so the inspector entertains any questions from the trustees and the general public. Trustees have any questions?
I think this has been very well thought out and very, very, it's very thoughtful and the presentation to us, I think it makes a whole lot of sense, so. I know they spent a lot of time on it.
So do we need to go into any background as far as definition of small solar facility, which we've already done? So, ORC twenty-five-one-nine point two-one-three B states that, notwithstanding Division A of section five-one-nine point two-one-one deals with cell towers, other revised codes, section five-one-nine oh two to five-one-nine point two-five with a revised code, and for power on a board of township trustees or board of zoning appeals with respect to the location, erection, construction, reconstruction, change, alteration, maintenance, removal, use, or enlargement of any small wind farm or small solar facility, whether publicly or privately owned, or the use of the land for that purpose. So that's basically ORC that gives us the power to do this. So this whole thing, I think, again, stems around Article eight, a agricultural district preamble in the German Township zoning resolution, states this district has been established to provide for agricultural activity and related uses, and is intended to protect and preserve areas of prime agricultural soils for continued agricultural and agriculturally-related uses. So I think that seems to be the consensus of the township. We want to remain agricultural versus other good solar farms. So basically, the bottom line is that if a resident wishes to construct a small-scale solar facility in a district zone other than I-two, that property would need to be rezoned to I-two by the German Township Rural Zoning Commission, the final approval by the German Township Board of Trustees. See what else I got. So basically, the public can access the changes to Article twenty-four and Article twenty-six, thirty-eight by a public records request or by visiting the zoning office during regular business hours. Until the effective date of six-seven twenty-four, the existing Article twenty-four and thirty-eight will be available online, as well as a version effective six-seven twenty-four. The original will stay in effect, will be in effect till six-seven twenty-twenty. Now, I'll plan on terminating the current moratorium on small solar facilities once it changes to Article twenty-four and thirty-eight going to effect on six-seven. I'll probably do that next regular meeting. I don't know. Basically, any more discussion? Kurt, do you have anything you have?
Well, yes. Rarely for.
Could you name it?
Yes. Sorry. Myself. Kurt Jacoby, twelve, nine-five-five, Harris Road. Primarily for Lou and Jake. This only covers to fifty megawatts, I think below that. So larger facilities are really in the hands of the county. The ORC gave the counties great control of that. County has given the indication that they are not willing to, you know, protect any farmland. So the larger, larger farms are actually maybe the greater, right, because you can chunk up a thousand acres at a time. So it's a different process. So this is only addressing those smaller ones. The performance bond was modeled after what the Ohio's Power Siding Board has in dealing with things like coal plants, atomic plants, you know, atomic nuclear plants. So you think of these as energy plants, really. It's electric plant, just like a coal-fired plant in a sense. So that's where we got that. I remember in one of our discussions, Shauna said, well, how are we going to keep track of these engineering reports for five years? So when you get the first application, you know, assuming that one comes eventually, and the engineering reports come and all that, that'll have to be tracked. So a system will need to be set up within the offices here to track those for five years, you know, and then five years after that. Reasons we had, we had the five-year engineering study was, what it had to be renewed was because things change, primarily cost, you know. You can imagine over five, ten, twenty years, if you set the original commissioning rate as the cost of the performance bond, by the time you get to twenty or even thirty years out, it's going to be a fraction of what the actual cost is, right? I mean, inflation doubles about every, what, twelve years, I think. Prices dope. So anyway, that was our thinking behind that. I don't know if you have any questions on any of that, but.
I think you guys did a great job. It seems very well thought out, so.
We worked on it just about a year.
I know. I know you guys spent a ton of time, and we greatly appreciate what you guys have done, so.
Covered about everything. We compared what other townships have, don't have. When I attended the OTA winter conference, it was, listened to some of the questions of the other township trustees, primarily trustees, honestly. It was clear that we were well ahead of other townships. I credit Mark Cross for that, because he gave us the heads-up and got us to listen to what the OTA had, the videos that they presented to us. And that was eye-opening. Honestly, that was a quick education, but we realized we had to step into this real quickly.
I think what you guys have is something that maybe we should send to the OTA that they can use for other rural townships as a model for.
I think that's actually right. Yeah, because a lot of this, a lot of these other, a lot of the townships that are in even more rural areas.
Right.
They are less sophisticated and more vulnerable to the big outer outside powers. And this money's, you know, for the large farms in particular, it's money's coming from out of state.
Right.
You know, so. Yeah, as much help as those folks can get.
Right, right. No, I think that we should make sure that we get ahold of Heidi or whoever at the OTA and give them this as a template, because they put templates for different things out all the time that we can use, so.
Yeah, I speak.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, just listening to some of the presentations on solar energy, there was at least a couple I listened to at the winter conference. I think we're on target here. Some will work with it, but once you get the first application, that's when you're going to put systems in place.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Any questions from our online visitor? I see the microphone is on. So do you have any questions for the board? Now he's muted, so. Okay. I suppose not. All right. Hey, I'd like to introduce a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-eight, amend the German Township zoning resolution as presented in case ZC twenty-four dash oh one.
Second.
Let's read the resolution.
Yeah. So a resolution amending the German Township resolution. Amending the German Township resolution, that's supposed to be.
Say that again, sir. Okay.
Okay, that's correct. Resolution amending the German Township resolution is recommended by the German Township Rural Zoning Commission in case twenty-ZC twenty-four dash oh one. His interest, introduce by me. Have you read that resolution? This is it. Does it make sense to? Basically, I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-eight, amend the German Township zoning resolution as recommended by the German Township Rural Zoning Commission in case ZC twenty-four oh one.
Let's read the entire resolution with all the whereas. Can you read it?
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
Whereas the German Township Rural Zoning Commission recognizes the need to change the text of the zoning resolution, specifically Article twenty-four I-two general industrial district, section two-four oh one D, Article thirty-eight accessory uses, section three oh one L, section three oh one, three eight oh one M, change to three eight oh one M from three eight oh one L, section three oh three C, and section three eight oh four M to include small-scale solar facility regulations. Whereas the German Township Board of Trustees have made some text corrections and revisions to Article twenty-four and thirty-eight for ORC five-one-nine zoning amendments, H, have incorporated those. have incorporated those changes into the documents. Whereas the German Township Rural Zoning Commission has developed and held a public hearing on four-eleven, twenty-twenty-four on the proposed amendment to the township zoning resolution in the form of case C C dash twenty-four oh one, and presented the proposed amendment to the German Township Board of Trustees for action. Whereas the Montgomery County Planning Commission has reviewed the said case on three fourteen, twenty-twenty-four, and recommends approval in the case. Whereas the German Township Board of Trustees have reviewed advertisers acquired and held a public meeting on the proposed amendments to the German Township zoning resolution as presented in zoning commission case Z C dash twenty-four dash oh one. Whereas, that changes to the text of the German Township resolution will become effective on June seven, twenty-four. Now therefore be resolved by the German Township Board of Trustees. German Township zoning resolution be amended as recommended by the German Township zoning commission in case Z C dash twenty-four dash oh one.
Is there a second to the resolution?
Aye.
Any discussion? Very now, I recall the role, Dr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Goddard?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-eight is adopted. Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at seven thirty-one.